I call the Oliver Springs Water Board meeting for January 16th to order. Roll call, Mr. Joe.
Robert Miller.
Here.
Jeff Bass.
Here.
Charlie Bailey.
Here.
Teresa Banham.
Here.
Terry Hollins.
Here.
Becky DeVaney.
Here.
We're all six, we have a court.
Thank you, Mr. Joe. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes from December the 5th meeting? No move. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Van Hooch. Any discussion? Or corrections or anything anybody note? All right. Roll call, Joe.
Robert Miller.
Yes.
Jeff Bass.
Bass.
Charlie Bailey.
Bass.
Teresa Banham.
Yes.
Terry Hollins.
Yes.
Becky DeVaney.
Yes.
Passes four, is number two.
Yes, sir. At this time, delegation from citizens, anybody wants to address the council that can come forward at this time? Just state your name. No wait tonight. Mayor update, I don't have a lot tonight, Corey. I'm going to defer you and if I see something I need to jump in, I will, so go ahead.
First off, reminder, Water Board members, got your continued education hours. We'll pick, we'll have probably two budget workshops this spring. So we'll be able to pick up probably four to six hours from that. Water plant, state reports were submitted on January the 10th with no violations. One future project for the water plant will either be an SRF or CBVG funded and it's been 2025 money. It's additional water source, looking at drilling a well up at the water plant. 2022, I spoke with Morgan Well Drilling about 1,000 gallon permitted well yield. Estimated cost is about 1.1 to 1.2 million dollars. So that will probably be our, one of our applications, either the SRF or CBVG. And what we'll look at will be whichever, I guess, covers more, whichever is more, I guess, financially beneficial. In December, we purchased 10.4 millions gallons from Anderson County Water Authority. We only sold 7.16 to the customers. So our sales are off by about 2.8 to 3 million. As a result, the water losses jumped from 53% up to 59. That's solely based off of that water sales number. One thing that being the mayor talked about, an issue with local government is pulling in all the digits on the metering. Currently, the way the badger pulls it in, pulls in two digits. So somebody uses like 3,550 gallons of water, they're only billed for 3,500. Camstruck is able to pull in all digits. So somebody uses 3,555 gallons, the bill should be for the 3,555. So that's one thing, we get the local government. Denver's got to call in. We've got numerous questions that we've got to work out with them. So basically, you're going to get where you bill for every gallon of usage. One thing we've got left on the project, I'll talk a little bit about that, is the one and two inch meters. So again, that's probably where you may see 5 to 6% of your water losses in your larger meters. Meter replacement project, currently installing the remaining meters we had. Three weeks ago, we had about 170 meters left. Our staff has been going out, we've had two crews installing the meters. We're down to about 80 to 90 meters right there. Collector sites were to be installed in, they were scheduled for January. Got an email last week, do the weather, they're probably putting that off to February. So that project's running a little bit long.
Which project was that?
The water meter replacement. That'd be the collector sites that's going on the, the, uh, San Antonio test. The water office, Lisa Powell recently took another job. She had been with the city for 19 years, so appreciate everything that she's done for the city and the water department. What we've done is moved Deborah Mahoney to the water office manager position. I'm highly confident in her abilities, Deborah's here. If she'll just stand up for just a second, I told her I wouldn't bring her up to the podium. If y'all got any quick questions for her, I mean, I feel very confident, like I said, in her ability.
Let me piggyback off what Corey just said. When I say I'm excited about her being in this position, I feel like this is the position for her, for the town. I really do. And if I didn't mean that, I wouldn't say it. So excited to have her in this position and that role doing what she's doing. So thank you.
Off of that, we've got to announce two open utility positions. One, your utility director, we lost Dax back to Congress. And then a water customer service representative to work in the office with Deborah. Pay for that would be based off of experience. Your wastewater plant collections, all reports were submitted on time, no violations. This past month, we've promoted Scott Roper to as our correct operator in charge of the collection system. So he's one of the few people who have got, actually got a collection system license. He's currently working on getting his wastewater treatment plant license. So he's, he's probably going to take that test in the fall this year. Your sewer system rehabilitation project, waiting on a vortex to begin the actual construction. So your Selvin Pond Sewer Oratorium was based on three things to get out from underneath that. One, you got to identify the project, have the engineering, then have the funding for it, and then the actual construction to start. So as soon as they break ground on that, I send the letter and we're out from underneath the sewer. And that, that was supposed to have started in December. So it's one thing I had to follow up with them. So what that project was, was repairing the lining of your service lines and the taps. Project 2019, 2020 was doing your main trunk lines. This is what did not get done during that project. And that's where you see a lot of your infiltration, is your taps. One thing we found during smoke testing is a lot of people's got their gutters tied into the sewer system. So what we've got to do there is send letters out to customers, hey, you've got a certain amount of time to get this stuff fixed. The other thing would be repairing some manholes. The area of this, this construction or rehabilitation would be Maple Avenue, Edmonds Drive, Foxwood Circle, and Tryton A Boulevard. One thing we need to talk about, we'll talk about it tonight, but be prepared February, look at purchasing a new service truck for the water distribution system. So for this year, you've got budgeted 63,000 for a vehicle for the water. I've got a lot of vehicles printed out in here in between meetings or after the meeting. If y'all go over here, we'll talk about it, go through a lot of printouts in here. So we're looking for 2022 or newer, probably less than 40 to 50,000 miles. Probably a Chevrolet Ford, you know, 3,500 series four-wheel drive truck. So I've got a lot of these in here if y'all look through those. Financials, if you want to look through those real quick. We've kind of implemented kind of a soft spending freeze on the water and general side. Front sheet, if you look at your revenues for the water, now your water is a lot easier to trend than your general fund. But your monthly average right now is 111,286. Now, the budgeted amount, where we built this budget off, was 115,750. So if you look at a gallons in sales, you're averaging right now about 7.85 million in sales. The budget was built off of 8 million gallons in sales, which is equivalent to the 115,750. So I'm not too concerned about that. That's your sixth month through the year. You're coming up on some of your high demand, higher usage of us anybody. So I'm not real concerned about that. You're trending toward, if y'all look the back sheet real quick. Right now, you're averaging 33,970 revenues over expenses. And you're trending toward 403,165 from the year. Now, if you want to look or reconcile that to a cash basis, maybe, like looking at your depreciation. Depreciation averages about 44,000 a month, that's 530,000 a year. So we're needing to make up about, now you're fine regardless, but when you reconcile the cash basis, again, that's where depreciation comes in. We're needing to make up about 10,569 a month, and that's very doable. So I'm not too concerned about the water budget. See if anybody has any questions about anything there? Again, the big thing was your water losses went up from 50, 53% to 59, and that is really revolves around your sales being so low. So another thing I'll link to again that, that we've been talking about in the office is keeping our billing days between 29, 30, and 31. That way, it shows on every customer billing, your billing days, like that 29 through 31. But this is another local government question, is looking at a way where all the customers can log on and view their bills. So we're, that's one thing we'll try to have set up as soon as we can. Because that's a lot of the complaints and calls that you get, is customers don't have any way to view the usage of your bills. The other thing would be email billing. I think we can do that with our current software, but again, that's another question we've got for local government when they call.
Can they pay online? Is someone who could say that's why you can just pay it online?
So they are, we do have that ability to pay online right now. But that's something that we kind of want to improve on. And we've talked to numerous other utilities about how they're, how they're doing this. Thing is, we got to find something that kind of coordinates and works with local government. So a lot, a lot of questions we're going to have answered here in the next couple of weeks.
Is there much problem with people paying? I don't pay online, I just rather check, because those here every day.
Yes.
But is, is there quite a bit of problems with the online payment?
Sure he has. Deborah might be able to answer that or any one about people paying online.
The biggest complaint is the 4.95 you think are.
And that's not set by us.
$4.95 to pay online.
And if I'm not mistaken, if you don't have your actual bill, you can't look it up.
Well, if you're going to have your account number.
That's maddening from what I've been told. I'm like you, I just bring it down here in paper. But if you go online, if you don't have your account, you're.
You don't hook your account number, you gotta have your account number.
You gotta have all your.
A login and a phone number. And then how much your bill is. Seeing you being.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think it's important to stress that the 4.95 that is charged to pay online is by state law. Because if your water bill's 100 dollars to the city, the water department by state law and regulation has to collect 100 dollars. If you pay online, there's a fee. And in, you buy from a store, the store absorbs the fee for the most part. Although you're seeing a lot of, a lot of stores pass on a user fee for a credit card to pass that cost on the consumer. But from our standpoint, state law requires if you pay your fines and costs online, there's a fee. You know, if, if you buy hunting and fishing licenses from the wildlife people in Tennessee and other states, the license is 100 dollars, you'll pay 105 or 110. I mean, that's, that's just state law. The state says, we get this money. And if you pay any other way, you're going to pay the cost because the state shall not absorb the cost.
And that 4.95 is set by hand court. We have no control over, over that fee.
I'd like to see us kind of figure out a way to pay it like a CUV. If you call them and get on their automated line and use a check with their routing number. There is no fee for the check.
Funny one of the power plans.
So that was another thing.
There's no fee, but if you had a card, it's like $3 and something if you use your.
If you're using the credit card.
Yeah. Or debit card.
I think they, they said, they had a meeting with one banker this, this week.
About SAH.
Yeah, SAH.
So payments. Yes, Mr. Roper.
Mr. Bass said Clinton Utility Board, you give them a routing number, and they pull direct from your checking account, they still put 2% on that because they, they do that, I do. Direct from the checking account, they still add 2%. Is there any way the city water down here can set up to where you can do, you know, give them a routing number, checking account number, and they just, it comes out automatically.
Literally, that's, they had, we had, well, I say we, Corey and Deborah had that meeting this week to set the, start the process of setting that up. So we're trying, we are. Corey?
That's all we've got, Roger.
Okay. All right, Mr. Miller.
I only got one thing. Corey, when was our deadline to have all these meters and stuff in place and everything up and going? Because I know we had one.
So the contract was deadline, I think that was a, that might have been a 365 day project. I came in the starting, I was a little held up about this time.
Yeah, it was.
It was either.
It's one of those.
And that's their problem, that's not on us.
That's right. So surely there should be penalties built in on that.
Well, that's what I was thinking, but I keep, I couldn't find the, I went to a ton of my paperwork and I couldn't find it. We get a contract. I would not give them to the council.
Yeah, you would, because I mean, those contracts are about like the audit books. So I'll, I'll pull all that out.
Okay.
Well, that's a good question.
Thank you. Mr. Bass?
Nothing for the Water Board this time.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bailey?
Nothing this time.
Thank you. Ms. Van Hooch?
Nothing this time.
Mr. Hall?
Corey, we had no violations, huh? Just to teach you something, how often do they check on you to get a check like that?
So when I say that we have no violations right there, that would be any, you know, hot tubidie violations, low chlorine, high chlorine, stuff through the water plant. Distribution system, positive samples, like your vacuum washers samples. And then your reports submitted within 10, you know, 10 days of the month. Same thing with the sewer plant, any type of sampler, sampling that was above MCL, stuff like that. So now, the state comes in, does a sanitary survey over two years. Well, that sanitary survey here for the water was February of '22. So it's coming up fairly soon. Your sanitary survey for the sewer plant was done in August of 2023. So you've still got.
This year.
20, that was '24. So we just, I forgot two years on that. So we're, like I said, they come in, go through all your reports, water plant, they look at your turbidity records, mainly your paperwork, make sure all that's in order. But that's, that's never two years' thing.
In the, in terms of water plant, you had to, still had to single phase at the pump house. Is that something we need to get, since we get CUV to change that?
At some point, what we, we saw right there, right now, your pumps are over, your motors up at the, with the water plant are single phase. You're looking at, were they 50, 50 horsepower motors there?
Sounds like it's 40.
You're getting to your max on, on the single phase. So what we talked about was if you're looking enough size enough there, you're going to have to go with three phase power there. So that would probably be a capital project, say, two years out. But I think the one thing we need to look at right now is probably drilling that well up there. But I mean, that is our, that is our view.
Because if, if they did want to do it, I think they'll get some kind of discount or something. You know, they do it around 24/7, like 40 amps.
Yeah.
All day long, all week long.
Two pumps, yeah.
That's all. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Bailey?
Not this time.
Not this time. Old business, Performance Services, or do we want to defer since he's not here?
So we can. I mean, we've kind of talked, just kind of go over this. I think kind of everybody's on the same page. We're going to try to do as much of that as we can in-house. Yeah, I think that the, the big thing with, with the contract proceeding was the dollar amount. We don't want to tie that much money up right now.
Yeah.
We have a lot of the stuff, I mean, like the LED lighting, the HVACs. I mean, I would, I would kind of recommend we just kind of do that in phases. Say one month, let's do the remodel, take care of your security issues first, and just do it as you go along. Instead of tying everything up at one, kind of one time.
Well, I got a question. Would that be out of order if I made a motion to resolve the contract, pay the $44,000 early termination fee, and pay, well, it wasn't 118, I don't know what the final cost is on the bill now.
It's 43,000 to resolve the contract, and 125,960 for the shed. It was 117, and we added the two garage doors. So you're running out to your 125,960.
Listen, if you want to make that motion, you make that motion. I'm glad for sake.
I mean, because I've, I've looked that stuff over and what, what they want to do, some of the work on this here, not just here, but all the buildings in the city and what they want to do. I think we can do it in-house and come out cheaper. And plus, not have to go in debt that much money at one time.
Right.
So fair enough. I'd like to look at local.
That.
Any discussion? Can you get us a Joe?
As a point of parliamentary procedure.
Yes, sir.
Would the motion include dividing the cost between the water and sewer department?
Yes.
And the general fund? And if so, how much divided?
So that's one thing that I asked this question around, I was talking around the day. If we were to decide that tonight, what is our timeframe? How does the contract work? And I think we have 60 days from time of when this was issued, when the project was presented. So it was presented last month, you've got 60 days from whenever he comes back presenting. So you realistically got 80 days to decide that. So I think we go ahead with the motion that you've got right now.
Well, what I'm talking about is paying, how to divide it up.
Yeah, that gives us time to figure out how you want to do that.
Okay.
Well, we've got the 43,000.
In a grant.
In a grant, yeah.
From the, is it the water department grant or a general fund grant?
It's an infrastructure planning grant, but that money probably won't be released for another six months. Now, the grant was issued to you last year.
So we got to pay it and then get reimbursed?
That's possible to do that. Now, I've got a way to just go ahead and pay everything out right, if we want to do that. And that's why I said, let's quit and make that motion right now, and that gives us time to work out your financials.
So let's, let's do this. Let's make the motion where that the mayor and the city manager and grant officials, and if necessary, the city auditor, will be able to divide the cost between the water and sewer department and the general fund department on both of these, and give them permission, if necessary, to pay it out of our cash flow and be reimbursed at some point. Because what I'm thinking of is, is this a lot of money? And if you don't authorize this to be paid, and they go ahead and pay it, what will the auditor say? I mean, you know, is that, is that going to be a finding that we didn't do it properly and so on? But by, and have them report back at the time this is paid about how to divide it up. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fair enough. So one thing I didn't go over, you're going to just add this real quick, your bank statements. You've got your bank statements in front of you, TV. So if you look at your back two pages, you've got your two accounts, the grant accounts and Regis Bank. These are accounts that we're going to close out. It's 38,201 in one of them, 110,224. So you're looking at 148,000 dollars right there in those two accounts you're going to, you're going to close them out. So I mean, there's, there's pretty much your payment. Now, that's from the water side. That's one thing that, kind of what Joe said there, let's work everything out with the auditors, make sure everything's okay by doing it that way.
And then when the grant money comes in, we reimburse proportionally?
Yes.
To the, to the city?
If they allow that, yes. Yeah.
Okay. Motion, second. Any more discussion?
We're going to be sure we get our prints. Yeah.
That's part of the deal.
That's part of the deal.
When you get the key.
Your engineer files, all your design files, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's one thing you make sure you get for your final payment. Yeah.
Roll call, Joe.
Robert Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Charlie Bailey.
Yes.
Teresa Banham.
Here.
Terry Hollins.
Yes.
Becky DeVaney.
Yes.
Passes.
All right, new business, authorizing Deborah Mahoney to be added to the banking account.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, Joe.
Robert Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Charlie Bailey.
Yes.
Teresa Banham.
Yes.
Terry Hollins.
Yes.
Becky DeVaney.
Yes.
That would be to all banking accounts too. So CNE had signatory permission.
Okay, what was that to be added to the?
All.
Signature or?
Yeah, like signatory, just for like all your bank accounts for the general and.
Yeah, I'm trying to think what that's called. Authorized signed checks.
Yeah.
All right. Motion to adjourn? No move. It's a move. Oh, all clear, sir. Call the town of Oliver Springs, City Council to order for January 16th. Roll call, Joe.
Robert Miller.
Here.
Jeff Bass.
Here.
Charlie Bailey.
Here.
Teresa Banham.
Here.
Terry Hollins.
Here.
Becky DeVaney.
Here.
We're all present. Name of court.
Thank you, Mr. Joe. Will you lead us in word of prayer, please?
Our Father, we come to you thanking you for all the blessings that you've given us and the freedoms. With these freedoms come responsibility. We pray that we would look to the past and see the historical nature of the settlement of our country and the many godly people that came over and wrote documents and established governments based upon your holy word. And we pray now, as we move into the future, that we would look back on the past and see that your hand has been on our country. And we pray that we return to you and your hand be on our country in the future. We pray for our elected officials and appointed officials on all that was a government, that you would give them only the wisdom that comes from you, that they would seek this wisdom from you. We pray for world peace. We pray that the war in the Russia and Ukraine here be resolved.
Yes.
We pray for peace in the Middle East. There's many other locations that have difficulty, and we pray for them also. We pray for the folks in our country that protect us in so many ways and serve us in so many ways, keeping us safe and healthy.
Yes.
Go with us now into this meeting, give us wisdom that comes only from you. We ask all these things in the last line's name.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a motion to accept the minutes from the December 5th meeting? I'll make the move. Thank you, Mr. Hollins, for motion. Second?
I'm second.
Second by Mr. Miller. Any discussion?
I've got one thing, Joe. Mr. Bieker up in charge, his, his name's spelled B-I-E-C-K-E-R.
B-I-E-C.
K-E-R. Correct.
Okay.
I remember the question, it seems a little different.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Joe.
Robert Miller.
Yes.
Jeff Bass.
Bass.
Charlie Bailey.
Bass.
Teresa Banham.
Yes.
Terry Hollins.
Yes.
Becky DeVaney.
Yes.
Passes four, zero, one, two.
Thank you, Joe. This time, delegation from citizens, anybody wants to come forward, just state your name and address the council?
Thank you, council. My name is Rick Chen. I live at 101 Stonebridge Way in Oak Ridge, Tennessee. Appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you. I've come here tonight to speak on behalf and defend your fine mayor. I've worked closely with, with him over the last several years and just wanted to take this second to really tell you what a great job he's doing. I'm a property developer by this, my business. I develop property and I'm a builder and get a chance to pay a lot of property taxes in Anderson County. So I'm very vested in this community and I really, I see a diamond in the rough here in Oliver Springs. I really think that your mayor is really reaching out and doing a great job to try to figure out a way to capture some of this business that's just driving right through this town. I see. I see a lot of opportunity here and honestly, I'd love to have a chance to do some things in this town. I've done a lot of investment in Anderson and Knox County in the past, but I see a lot of opportunity over here. I also served on city council for eight years in city of Oak Ridge and vice mayor for six of those years. One of my biggest pushes and passions was keep property tax low and to grow that sales tax. And I see there's a lot of opportunity to do both here in Oliver Springs. There's a lot of people that come here. It's, this is a world famous place for four-wheelers. People go up on that mountain up there. And they all stay in Oak Ridge. None of them stay here. There are no hotels for them to stay here. They do have campgrounds here and I think you've done a great job capturing some of those. But I think there's a lot of opportunity here and I just wanted to let the council know of what I'm thinking as a citizen of Anderson County and lifelong resident of Oak Ridge. What a good job that Mayor Stiltman is doing. I just wanted to let you know that and tell you what a, I appreciate what you're doing in your direction.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chen. And so if anybody here or listening wants to, you know, approach him and would love to have some property development in our town. And so Mr. Chen would make that happen. I know that for a fact. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to address council? Mayor, we'll update real quick. Uh, snow removal. Snow removal, right? Uh, we get hit with four-inch snow and I just want to say Tom Patterson, Rusty Phillips. I don't know Tony's last name. McGee, Tony McGee. How many other towns did the guys stay up till 4:30 in the morning? Our town did. And that's whenever we finally just called it, like, we couldn't take it no more. We were tired from 2:00 in the afternoon to 4:30 a.m. Rusty, Tom.
Tommy started at 8:00.
Well, true, that's true. They started at 8:00 with a preparation, but it was, it was, yeah. It was 2:00 when we started pushing snow though. And and then we had, we had some help. A gentleman named Ira Thacker had joined us. He's a buddy of mine. And then a guy named Jeremy W.I.T.E.K. I don't know how to say his last name. This gentleman is at the bike park and all of a sudden we see this Kubota going up and down the highway, clearing parking lot after parking lot. I'm like, who is this guy? And some, it's a Kubota-wheeled machine, right? And he just, here's what he told, in a text message, he's like, hey, I saw the Facebook post that you made about buying snowplow. And he said, and it spurred me to get my machine out and clear roads with you guys. I was like, that's what it's about. That's what this is about. Helping our community, about serving our people, right? Do you realize a four-inch snow? We have roughly 140 roads in this town. We have 55 miles worth of roads in this town. And Rusty, was it about 1:00 they were cleared on Saturday?
Yes.
That's incredible. That's incredible. And that's a testament to their hard work and to leadership that responds. And so I want to say thank you publicly. I'll thank them privately and I just, that's my heart, is serve our people, our community and let people know that, you know what? We may not be the biggest, we may not have the biggest budget or the most amount of money, but you won't find a place that cares more about its people than here or this mayor, these people that work here. So Cory, for that, you've got it.
So that was the first thing I had. So I appreciate you doing that, is thanking Rusty, Tom and Tony for everything that they do for this town. Uh, and that was kind of evident. Like you said, staying up till 4:30 Saturday, you ordered doing this. So thanks again for that. Uh, the red light at Food City. Uh, we had CUV come out, check the power supply, everything's fine there. So currently that red light's cycling, or it's set to cycle 24 hours a day like normal. If a car does come up to Hannah Drive or out of Food City, that kind of what initiates the change. So everything's been fine and that's just cycling as normal. Street light outages, uh, with the help of Chief Blackston and all of his officers, we submitted on December 20th, a list of 68 street lights that were either out or having phone cell issues. So we've submitted that list. They have, CUV has responded. I don't know how many of those that they've got repaired, but they are aware of those. Uh, one announcement, and the handout is actually out on the table, uh, out in the lobby. Uh, the Mamie Carmichael School is hosting a Soul Food Sunday on Sunday, February the 9th from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the DAV Lodge at 530 Kingston Avenue. Uh, questions, you can contact Julia Daniel at 865-789-0846 or Fay Curd. Again, that was the Soul Food Sunday at the DAV on February the 9th. Garbage pickup. One thing, Waste Connections has kind of reached out to us. Uh, they've requested that we make customers kind of aware of the stipulations in the contract about keeping the streets clear, not parking the, you know, vehicles out the streets where their trucks can get up some of the narrow roads. Another thing was all trash has to be bagged and inside the cans. They're not required by contract to pick up bags that are just set out in the road or, you know, in the yard or anything. Everything has to be in a bag, in a can. A few complaints that we have had, they've been resolved in really a timely manner. I don't know what I would be all third, but I mean, like I said, everything that we've had come in, Wendy sends the email and she gets a fairly quick response. Uh, one thing, last spring or summer, the mayor kind of mentioned about event coordinator for the town of Oliver Springs. And having Lauren left, you kind of acted as that coordinator or planner for the town, uh, kind of with a number of events that we've had in the past year. I think it'd probably be a wise idea if we look at the disposition or even possibly create a committee of individuals to help a coordinator position. Um, I know Charlie Bailey's helped out a lot with a lot of the events that's been going on in the past year here. Uh, and she had also mentioned about building off of the progress of what we've had going and not let anything fall behind.
Correct.
Uh, so one thing I'd like to do is council kind of discuss that, get your thoughts about pursuing that. I've also asked Lauren to come to the February meeting. If y'all got any questions for her, if it's something you all look at doing, she'll be here at the February meeting, but I kind of want to get y'all's thoughts on that right now.
I attended the wonderful winter of Oz and it was really, really nice. I mean, it was a first attempt and it was very well organized. Joe and I walked up and down the street. There were people with tents set up. We bought some merchandise just because we want to encourage them to participate again if we decide to do this again. But I don't know, Charlie, whoever, was it you that was in charge?
Uh, with Lauren's help, for sure.
Well, you guys did a great job and didn't Heather Blackston help you?
Heather helped a lot too, yeah.
I think the three of you made a great committee, myself. I really, I mean, it was so well organized because Joe and I walked from event to event. You've had lots of business. You've had a ton of business. The petting zoo was right across from you and the people were really interested in the animals over there. And it drew people into the shops downtown, you know, at least it did the art business, the floral shop business. I thought you guys, I just thought you guys did an amazing job, really. You had lots of activities for kids and the kids were genuinely engaged in the activities you had them doing. And it was well, well done.
So, I mean, again, one thing, get y'all's thoughts on that. Like I said, Lauren will be here at the February meeting.
I think we should consider asking Charlie, Lauren and Heather Blackston to be our volunteer committee for events because they, together, they work really well together if they're willing to do that.
And I think it would be a great step forward for our town. Something we've never had before, ever. So, you know, it, there's an excitement in Oliver Springs, there is. When I'm out and about, I hear it all the time from other mayors, other county mayors, that the Oliver Springs is turning heads in a positive manner. And that right there, we continue to build on that, what we're doing, trying to, you know, turn that ship, that degree at the time, where I digress.
We'll go through the financials real quick. You've got the bank statements for your general fund. Currently, your general fund is set at 427,297. Your State Street A gas fund is setting at 242,750. Drug fund, 11,031. City judge fund, 3,510. Payroll account, 13,855. And your HRA account still has 6,076,137. So on the HRA account, I should have mentioned this in the water meeting as well, is you'd all over have your HRA or your task accounts for your health insurance, for employee health insurance. So everything started January 1st on the state plan, state health plan. So one thing I need to do is have all the employees aware of that if they have any remaining task claims for 2024. I probably didn't set a date, have those turned in by the end of February. And once all those claims have been resolved, you'll need to close out those HRA accounts for the general and water fund and just transfer that money probably into that local government investment school account. But that'll be one thing we need to look at here next month or so. Your spreadsheets, uh, the legal side, that's your State Street A revenues, your collections, sanitation fund, your drug fund. The back sheet will be the general fund account. So you're, again, when you look at the back sheet, you know, right now your operating expenses over revenue, but your revenues, maybe your property taxes don't start coming into October, November, December, January and February will be your big months for revenue for property taxes. Your sales tax, um, the local sales tax, state sales tax, I mean, everything's kind of above where we project it, where we budget it, so I mean, that's a good thing. Couple other items are, you're under a pot of bet on revenue, but it's certainly stuff that's manageable going forward. Uh, if you want to look at the back sheet real quick, bottom of the last page, uh, your, your, to date, your 211,390 expenses over revenue. If you look at last year, we were at 174,000 expenses over revenue. So you're not too far off at the moment. Uh, again, we kind of initiated that soft spending spree or freeze for January, maybe part of February. Now we're only spending stuff on like repair needs. Pairs of vehicles on the water side, you pair your water line, your water pipe, you need some parts and material and stuff like that. But we're kind of watching the next two months just to see, uh, just keeping an eye on the spending a little bit highly.
Let me piggyback off of something you said about sales tax. We were discussing launching a business a month, highlighting the business a month, keeping it local. So we hope to, maybe in February, Chief Blackston mentioned that in the group thread that me and him and Cory are in. I think maybe Rusty was in on that conversation as well. You know, when I say, I never understood the importance of buy local until I became mayor and now buying local is of the absolute utmost importance because our sales tax. So like, for instance, this year for Christmas, instead of going to Knoxville to get a lot of my shopping or even on Ridge, I did it on Amazon. If I could buy it in OS first, I did, but if I couldn't, then, you know, I went to Amazon because we get the sales tax from Walmart, Amazon, whatever, right? So we also have discussed possibly a buy local campaign, you know, just to re, you get people thinking, well, if I can buy at least Harbinger, if I can buy it at Food City, or if I can buy it at Harby's, or if I can buy it here, then that benefits our town. And I will live and die by this model. A little plus a little plus a little will equal a lot over the course of the long haul, right? So one purchase may not be a big deal, but you extrapolate that one purchase over 365 days, that's a good deal. Cory?
The only other thing I've got is your 25, 26 budget. Be thinking about capital projects and deeds and plan on taking even one or two days, spending an hour or two with me to start going over like a new budget. Or even with the existing financials. But come see me with that and go through all that, especially when we start building that budget. I mean, I'd love to have y'all's input on all that. So we'll, as time goes along, we'll go and set stuff like that up. And that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Miller?
I'd just love to thank each and every one of the street employees for the time they put in this past weekend and for you too, Mayor, I like personally. Thank you for telling me to avoid from the family to be out here, uh, in public. Good.
Thank you.
And that's all I've got for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Bass?
It's about the same moment, like I said, we heard the, we heard the scrapers go down the road about three times. My neighbors, our neighbors, the people on the street. This is probably the first time they've seen it happen so quick. And that's, well, as that's to do with our town, they, our employees, our mayor, they did a great job in their town. And employees do excellent work all year round, keeping their town looking the best they can, probably have. I'd just like to commend all of them. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Ms. Bailey?
Same thing. Thank you to the street department and anyone who had anything to do with the Christmas event. Becky was a big help on that, so. And it did go really well, so thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Awesome. Uh, thank you. Ms. Van Hook?
We do live in a very, it's a small town, but we live in a great group of people that are pitch in and do whatever is needed at the moment. And that's what makes the town great, is that you can count on people to help with the wonderful winter in Oz and with snowy events, with whatever. All you have to do is put out the word and people show up. Not every town could do that, but we're blessed in this town to have people who are genuinely willing to come out and help us with whatever it is we need to do. The only question I have for you, Cory, is, I know I'm looking at six months' worth of the budget, which is really an interesting thing to see. Is there anything in particular that you wanted to call our attention to that you haven't already mentioned that?
The only thing would be just keep that on your revenues. Mainly the property taxes and there's some others down the bottom, you know, they're kind of, kind of low. I mean, there's nothing that really sticks out to me. Some of the highlighted things that are in that budget, again, any of the highlighted stuff might be some coding issues. Some of the stuff that I've highlighted in here, in particular for the police department, are capital projects, capital purchases. So you'll be receiving, kind of reading for those. Uh, if you want to look at, page, page six. Two purchases in, that would be your original there. Uh, top of the page highlighted, uh, small items, equipment. Those are 9,564 to 2283. Some of that was safety equipment, uh, you know, traffic cones, stuff like that. The other was radar detectors, radios, stuff like that. So you're getting reimbursed for those. So that's actually, I guess, part of the grant. Uh, there's nothing really else that kind of sticks out. Yes, you're about, roughly 20, 22,000 well over kind of behind where you were this time last year, but I mean, there's nothing that really would really step out as an issue.
22,000 is not that much. What do you see as our next capital project?
So from a street standpoint, you want to try to at least pave one road a year. So, I mean, if I had to put anything right now, it'd probably be paving where two roads. And Rusty has got, I guess, lists of like all the potholes, water cuts and even some of the old drain tiles that had been replaced and kind of sinking down. So he's got some. So, he's got a good list of that. And that's probably another thing we'll try to tackle with the next budget, is the patching more the roads and the paving.
Anything else that really just jumps out to you that we really need to concentrate on immediately or in next year's budget?
You may look at a smaller dump truck. I know this kind of come out when we were doing the, you know, the salting. Right now, your salt truck's showing a lot of rust, like urination.
Bad.
Pretty bad shape. So, you may look at a smaller, say, I don't know, maybe a one, two ton, you know, one ton dump truck.
And I will, let me piggyback off of that. If you go right now and look at where we keep our salt, sand, gravel under, it has literally fallen in, literally. And we, I won't say we purposely put this, we were hoping that T-Dot would use our location as a satellite field office. And we, we've talked to T-Dot multiple times about doing just that. We were hopeful and now we're not very hopeful. So, right, so, we have known this as an issue for a while. Rusty will tell you, we've known it for a while, but we're getting to a point where it's becoming critical. Like, why do we go spend thousands of dollars on sand and salt if we have it covered with tarps? But that's just, that's not ideal. That's just not ideal. And, you know, we build a nice garage for, just now, for our equipment to go under. It's probably something we need to look at, you know, going forward. Let's build something nice that's going to be sustaining for the next 30, 40 years and, you know, leave our legacy to say, hey, you know, we're redoing the infrastructure, we're giving these, our people what we need to succeed. So, I would say that, Mr. Van Hook.
I would like, yeah, I would like for you guys to get together and kind of put us together a list of maybe your top 10 projects. I mean, just, just put them up there.
So, we'll also, I mean, the police department, fire department as well.
Yes.
Because, I mean, they've, they've got needs.
Because we're going to need to, we're going to need to put those in some kind of order. And, I mean, we, I'm all forced doing something. We have to figure out what we can afford today, but we must keep moving forward.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
I agree with the previous comments, all the good work. We're bringing it in the fall, I guess, and next cleaning, especially leaves, we could push it back a few more weeks.
Take a little curve.
You know, some people got antsy about getting theirs going quick and that makes it start early.
Right.
Like the Redford fires, they didn't follow it the week after we were finished.
Yeah.
Have there been any, it seems like the '61, '62 light, seemed like it has trouble after a power surge or something. I see them, y'all haven't had it. It was totally dark.
It's happened with the power grid with CUV. The red light, that Winter Gap Boulevard is tied to Knoxville Highway. It is not tied to downtown or the Boulevard's power. So, what happens is, is if you have a power failure going towards Petros, that affects our red light. That's something that, you know, I talked with Mayor Cory about going forward, trying to get CUV and change our main route from being powered from Knoxville Highway to being powered from downtown will alleviate that problem, but we've just had so many other things. That's not something we pursue just yet.
So, the power was on on this side, but it's still dark on that side towards Petros?
There was no darkness in Oliver Springs. It was all up Knoxville Highway, even Winter Gap Plaza had the power. But the Trump lines that have come and defeat that, they needed a different power source. They pulled from Knoxville Highway, so car hits a power line and, you know, up in Mill Creek, it's going to cause our red light to come out, but everybody.
But I thought we had some means of backup or workers or something. So, when the power's off, it doesn't have no battery backup?
No.
That's.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mrs. Devaney?
So, I think there was some talk about a beautification committee sometime ago.
Yes, there was. And we need to revive that. I told Mrs. Crowe that in January, we needed to revive it. So, you, you are correct, ma'am.
So, do we want to discuss it? It's not approved at all?
Uh, we can. Joe, how do we, how should we proceed forward with talking about a beautification committee, for lack of a better term?
If you're looking for, say, a county, I mean, a citywide beautification, I think you as the mayor would have the authority to appoint the committee. You could have town council, you could present several before town council have a motion to second to approve the committee. So, there's a number of ways it could be done. You can even have an ad hoc group of citizens form, and then form a committee on their own and approach town council and the citizens and the officials of the town with these various ideas. Funding would have to come from an existing budget, and if it exceeds the authority of the city manager and the mayor to approve the expenditures, then it had to be approved by town council. And that's the three ways I would see it.
Good.
You know, kind of like you have not appointed this, this events committee as such, but by the process of discussion, it's gone from one possible person to three. You know, and there could be several more that would come forward, where it'd be a committee of five, and that could be informal. I'm not sure you officially appointed the three ladies, the original committee, they just kind of came together and got it done, but you certainly could appoint them officially in writing.
So, we've opened the discussion tonight. Could we take it up in February? We can have, we can have discussions amongst ourselves and figure out exactly how we want to go forward, and then in February, we can launch.
And in the meantime, though, you'd have to approach the folks that you think would serve on the committee and say, and say yes or no, hopefully.
Okay.
And then if you have, you want to file with the committee, if you've got five people, then you've got five volunteers and there's your committee. If you had, say, 10 people, you can even have a committee of 10 because the more you have, the more interest you have and the more workers you have to get the work done. You know, 10 people can cover, say, five projects and five people might get two or three.
Right. Okay, fair enough. Is that from Mrs. Devaney?
That's fine.
Anything else?
That's it.
That's it. Chief?
First question I have is, you know, we all have our activity reports and plans ready to put in there. Is there any questions on any of that?
Hey, you all may be considering that.
I mean, Chief Laxton, how much weight have you lost?
Seventy.
Hey, I want to commend this guy, right? I want to commend you publicly for the effort that you put in to take control of your health and being an example, not only for me, because this year, y'all don't know this, but I've launched a health initiative that my wife knows all about, y'all don't know it, but you've inspired me and I want to say thank you. So, I appreciate that, so.
The next thing I brought to bring before you is, I want the surplus rifle that Spring City Police Department is needing. This rifle has been our agency for quite a while. It's not in use. It's not a rifle that we put out to any officers to use. It is actually a class, a class three weapon, therefore it is on our ATF books. We cannot sell it to any kind of FFL. We can only sell it to another law enforcement agency. We've not really sought after for trying to find somebody to buy it. We've had someone approach us needing help and they've asked to buy it. I'm bringing that before you to see if we can sell it to the Spring City Police Department, gets it off our books and out of, out of the gun safe.
I'll make the motion that we surplus the just mention rifle to Spring City.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Who seconded that?
Ms. Van Hook. Roll call, Joe.
You want to put a dollar amount in there?
So, I had Cat and Owens look it up. That rifle, brand new, is going for about $300. They have offered, offered us $200 to pick it on their sport.
That's okay. Roll call, Joe.
Robert Miller?
Yes.
Jeff Bass?
Yes.
Charlie Bailey?
Yes.
Chris Devaney?
Yes.
Terry Hollis?
Yes.
Becky Devaney?
Yes.
The next thing I bring before you is, I'm asking for permission from myself, city manager, Cory Jenkins, and Mayor Schiltgren to assign an MOU with the city of Hareman. So, what this looks like is, right now, we have been informed that Rome County, out of all the police agencies, kind of that way, and the sheriff's department does not have a SWAT team. They had a critical incident the other day where the highway patrol was asking for a SWAT team, and the only one that Rome County knew of was the referral to Loudoun County or Bluff Counties. In the process of trying to find a SWAT team to get that way, situation kind of turns out. Could have went really, really bad. We had the availability here to respond if we need to. Kind of got a lot of people still thinking and it caused this motion to kind of move forward faster. The city harem won't start a SWAT team and they brushed out us to train them, teach them what we're doing and kind of learn our ways, and we're going to help them. However, if the city harem has an emergency and they call us in an emergency, we can respond. There's no MOUs in place for, you know, emergency situations. We can go and we're covered. However, when it comes down to training, say they have a high-risk search warrant they want to execute and they want to use us, we have to have an MOU in place saying that we both understand each other's role in this and that y'all, as our governing body, give us permission to go do that. So, that's what the MOU is for. So, the MOU, basically from the town to the city of Hareman, comes from y'all, and that would be what the mayor and the city manager would be signing. Then, when it comes down to departmental policies, it goes from chief to chief and that's what I would be signing. I'm seeking permission from y'all to do that tonight.
Y'all make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Bass, seconds. Any discussion?
I read through the paperwork that you gave us today, and it looks, it's got my approval.
Thank you. We looked through several other cities' MOUs. This was approved by our city attorney, Tyler Davis. He got a copy of it when I sent it to the mayor and the city manager to look over and everything that they, they're quite happy with it.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Joe.
Robert Miller?
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass?
Yes.
Charlie Bailey?
Yes.
Chris Devaney?
Yes.
Terry Hollis?
Yes.
Becky Devaney?
Yes.
This last general order that I'm asking to be passed, the public access to police records, we've never had a formal policy. Some months back, we ended up getting into a subpoena issue and General Sessions Court over body camera and car camera videos. Y'all see that all the time about what can people get, what can't they get, you know, what's the cost associated behind it, things of that nature. Well, it was settled in court between our city attorney and several other attorneys that were seeking DUI videos. My understanding at the time that that order was what we went by. However, I got questioned, where is it formally in writing? That is this. So, we now have it in formal writing of what we've been practicing. That is the only reason this is coming forward, so that it is in our general orders. These are the costs associated. This is what you pay. If you want to file an agency, you've got to contact me and file an agency. I will get with the judge and make sure he was good with that, as well as the city attorney. We go forward and it just, it makes it a formal process.
And our city attorney has reviewed this?
He has not. This is his agreement that he made in court, so it's already a binding agreement in General Sessions Court. This is just it in paper.
Okay.
Because I asked, God asked to produce it one time and I actually had to go back to a case where, you know, I was subpoenaed from a hoop and law firm and found the agreement where the lawyers agreed to it, and it was actually on that person's judicial history, which is not something I can produce to other people, so that's why we need it in writing. So, when they say, hey, let me see what y'all agreed to, here it is.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Bass. We have a second. Second by Mr. Miller. Any discussion? Roll call, Joe.
Robert Miller?
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass?
Yes.
Charlie Bailey?
Yes.
Chris Devaney?
Yes.
Terry Hollis?
Yes.
Becky Devaney?
Yes.
One just thing I wanted to add, and of course, it comes from Croatia, from Ms. Van Hook, to help you also think about when the budget talks are happening, myself, the mayor, and Cory just done a six-month review. One thing that I don't think got failed to be mentioned, but something to look out for as well, realize the reason that we're not, you know, too concerned with the budget coming up, you've got to realize, we've not seen the savings from the contracted dispatch yet, as well as, one of the things that we didn't have in the budget because it happened after, is when you start looking at the percentage uses of the wages, one of the things that's not been accounted, that's not in budget, is the money that we're getting from the federal government to hire those two additional officers. That is not in our budget. That is going to come up in a budget amendment later on in the year.
Hey, one thing that, and I want to give Chief Laxton complete and total credit for this, whenever I first became mayor, he asked me, he's like, hey, what are, what are some things that you want to see the police department do? And I, and I unequivocally just said, I want to see our children protected, our families protected, and come back with some ideas. And he's like, hmm, what about a SWAT team? And I said, absolutely. Now, that seems like it's overkill for this size of a town, does it not? It does, let's be honest. However, does anybody remember Uvalde, Texas, what happened? And I told David unequivocally, I do not want Uvalde, Texas to happen in Oliver Springs, Tennessee. And they have worked diligently to make sure that does not happen and won't happen under air watch or on air watch. And I have seen the professionalism at which they train. I've been there when they've done their SWAT training. It's incredible. I've even went with them when they, you know, sometimes when you have to deliver a warrant for arrest, it's not, it's not fun. It's not, it's, there's a lot of danger involved, is there not?
Yes, sir.
Well, if you have seven or eight officers, that danger becomes a lot less. And I, and I have been there with them when they have done that, and I appreciate that, Dave. So, thank you. So, Chief Bailey?
Nothing to note, sir.
Nothing to note. Any old business? Any new business? Uh-oh, you know what's coming. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Some move, all favors sake.